What he did.
Real good.
Let's go to the bold and prayers and start this building. This is going to be very informal, but we're going to always pray anytime you embark upon any greater important undertaking can need to pray. So let's go to God. Father God, once again, we did come before your wonderful throne of grace and glory as we do every day. Thanking you for all the many mercies, blessings, comforts of life. You are so kind and so generous to all of us. You are the one from whom all our blessings flow, and we just thank you so much for that. Father God, I do pray that everything we say and do in here today will be pleasing in your sight. I thank you for this opportunity. I truly thank you for a balanced budget that has no tax increase for our citizens. Give us the wisdom, the guidance, the direction to make the best decisions and to accept those things that we cannot change, change the things we can, and the serenity to know the difference between the two. Father God, these things I pray in your name, and it's again a prayer of thanksgiving to you for all that you do. These things I pray in your name and in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Yeah, let's see something first. Oh, there's something that is really, really important. I'm gonna stay a little while. I got some stuff that's still down like my cooler, and I got to get it. So anything that.
I got you.
Be a part of, I mean, I'll stay.
So how, how I want to start off, well, I wanted everybody to open a budget message. So this. So let's go through this budget message. This is the highlight of this budget. Okay? New tax increase. Tax increases recommended stay with seven, eight, six per hundred dollar valuation. Okay? That's what we're accustomed to. No change. We also, it mentions the estimated valuation for real and personal, and what that will generate based on ninety-eight percent collection. Okay? Ninety-eight percent is where our tax department is collecting on average, which is a very good average. We go to number four. The budget contains two part-time positions being made full-time. I told staff not that positions if possible. Both of these positions are funded through grant funding, different kinds though. Senior center can pick it up through grant funding with the council on aging. The animal shelters, part-time to full-time was because of that fifty thousand dollar grant that we received. You know, if we can turn a grant like that every third year, that pays the difference. And status. We're gonna try it. I hear very good things coming from that individual. So in lieu of an additional staff member in public works, we, I'm proposing we contract with Redcoats starting in July to mow in-town facilities. They're a little more professional in what they do. It can be done at a rate lower than the cost of an employee. And the person, the second mower who was working for David will then go back and do what the additional employee he thought he needed would have done. This makes everybody happy, to my knowledge. There is a three and a half percent quota for all employees in this budget. CPI, at the time this was done, was three point four, three point five, so you know, a roundup, but it's pretty dug down close. Some of our bigger expenses, the community college and Green County schools, remain the same cost. News Regional Libraries is asking for an eight percent increase, and that's to keep the doors open as we are accustomed to. So we don't have to reduce hours and such.
Is that what the school was questioned? Is that the amount they requested or?
School.
Do you bring count of school?
We had a schools that requested an additional amount of money that I wasn't able to put in the budget.
Well, there was the article came out, it was kind of, it was not good. I can't remember when it came out, but it showed how much brain can a bit of actually forward to give the schools, how much will actually pay it. That was a huge difference between the two things. So I kind of like give schools a little bit more minutes, or at least what we can give them credit to up it, you know, because if you go back to Google Great County Schools, how much did it afford? It was a huge difference. I kind of like the honor request.
I hear you, and I caution you that comparison is the thief of joy. Okay?
Are we not in the second year of a three-year agreement contractually with the schools?
We are. Generally, how we do things is we do go on three-year terms. It allows us to. Now, I understand if you would like to contribute more, that's wonderful. I can show you how it could be done. I didn't put it in there because, as Benny said, we are in the second year of a three-year unofficial agreement. So.
That's true. Three years.
Yeah. It, it just.
Why are they having so much of a short pause?
I believe that some of their funding changed. I forget the exact name of it. I can, I can text Frank and ask, or Dr. Creach and ask him, but something changed in their funding, and they want to make sure that they can provide supplements and whatnot for their teachers and assistants. And.
Thought that's where it was more.
Yeah. We can discuss that more as we get there. I appreciate you bringing that up.
We definitely need to get it. I said, it was a huge amount on what it states here. We can actually afford. And what they actually did. States not running their budget there.
Yeah, I, I appreciate their input. Let's see. So this budget continues my initiative, bringing all vehicles within the eight-year vehicle replacement plan. This budget contains thirteen new vehicles. But I will say that I think I had three of them are for transportation, and that is federal funding. So that knocks it down a little bit. We do have nine fire departments who have said they would like to, they would like to participate in the first responder program. And remember, we're budgeting that at twenty-two-five. Twenty-five, sorry. The Global Transpark Economic Development Region dues are in here. Now, our water, sewer, and landfill solid waste fees all ask for an increase. Now, why would they ask for an increase, you ask? If we're being charged an increase for sewer to farm bill, it would be my recommendation to pass that on. If we're being charged an increase from GUC for alternate water, it would be my recommendation to pass that on and not absorb it, where we would have to have an increase in future years that is painful. If we go ahead and added two point nine-three, three point three-one, three point eight-three for water, or four point nine residentially, five point nine for prisons on sewer, that's a lot more palatable than if we let that stack two or three years, and it becomes fifteen or twenty percent. We don't want to do that to our folks. I don't want to do that. The solid waste fee is currently at a hundred dollars, fifty for the availability, fifty for the user fee. I recommend we increase it ten dollars, five dollars to the availability, five dollars to the user fee. That balances the budget one. But in the bigger picture, I know our neighbor Pitt County has just increased their annual fee from one-twenty to one-thirty. Our total fee is one-ten. So what I'm saying is if we compare, which we shouldn't, but if we, when we do compare, there, why do we think that we can operate the same utility or the same enterprise at a discount of our neighbors? I like to pride myself that we're good at business too. I don't think we're that good. I think that we could be doing more to be putting money away in this particular fund. If you recall, this particular fund has been in the red forever. And we need to be more realistic about what we're charging. And if fee needs to be increased to cover, that needs to be increased. The last thing I have here is the Fiscal Research Division of the General Assembly. If you recall, last year I used OSBM. OSBMs was a little off. Their forecast was not as accurate as, as the General Assembly's Fiscal Division, so I used their forecast this year. They revised their sales tax forecast to increase one point two percent from last year. The trend I see is I left a flat sales tax, no increase, from last year's two percent reduction. I think that we need to be very conservative in this as time goes on. I just don't see the spending trend like it was at one time continuing. They are what I consider the highlights from pretty quick budgets, our biggest budget to date. Are there questions on any of those highlights?
Yeah.
Yes.
Number eleven.
I don't know. Who's the third department not participating?
I would have to ask Brock. That came from him. I did think it was important to mention to you, but I have to get that for you.
All right, she was off the red. Number eleven.
Okay, annual dues to the Global Transpark Economic Development Region.
Are they doing any better?
I think they're, Trey.
Yeah, for what we pay, and I think we receive our money worth plus. If it was any more, we would have a.
Last year, we were having a little problem.
Yeah, we're seeing some progress, I think. Yep, from a marketing standpoint and promotional standpoint, they're doing what they need to be doing for what our fee is.
Okay. So I believe that we gain a value for the money what we're charged. We're part of a brand, and we couldn't do that without that.
Right. I understand. I just want to make sure if I knew better than anywhere last year, you know, we had a problem last year. So I'm glad it's.
I summarize the message with every year this gets harder. And a lot of credit needs to go to department heads. Some are here. They put a lot of effort into this. A lot of them are, all of them have bought into, let's budget what we need. Let's make sure we take care of ourselves, take care of the service that we're dividing. We do it as efficiently and effectively as we can. And we've got a lot of they've bought into that. I really appreciate that. Credit goes to them, and then it also goes to you guys. If there's no questions, we can jump in. Questions? Okay. Okay, so what I'm hearing is the two that did not opt in of the first responder is Castoria and Arva. And then Dr. Creach said that the additional funding was requested to offset rising operational maintenance costs as the increased cost of benefits for local employees. Okay? So things we can continue to consider.
At least though you can include the rental lease for the vehicle that we're done, and we talked about it in our retreat. The soft.
Yeah. Now I can show you graphically the better value in only rather than leasing.
Save a lot of money now, doesn't. And here that's about it.
In years one through four, you would. And then, but anyways, I can show you that graphically if you'd love. Okay, so let's jump in. Our revenues are first, and you can see ad valorem taxes and whatnots have gone up. There's a, it's almost five hundred thousand dollars, or just over five hundred thousand dollar increase from prior year. That's a little bit of what we're balancing, what we're able to increase departments requests with. We jump down into sales taxes, and you can see that there's an increase based on current year. Okay, so I have a flat sales tax for the budgeted year. And so there's a little increase there too. We get down into our program specifics, and in each of these places, you're going to see there's some variation. Some things grow, some things are reduced, but overall, there is a small growth. So revenue, revenues are coming in so that we can expend more monies. We can, we can support our departments. Okay. I don't know if you have specific questions on general fund revenues. I'd be happy to answer those questions for you.
Where, where, back up a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Where was the eleven, one thirty?
Eleven, one thirty. When I was looking through here, it's going to be.
And this on the computer is not the same.
It's not in order.
Well, eleven, one thirty is a lot of senior center revenues. So when this was put together for your viewing pleasure, senior center revenues are on top of senior center expenditures. And I think, okay, I might have marked that because I took notice and I was ready for that question, sir.
This, this, this on the TV is just a spreadsheet, so it shows from the starts and number from one, one-six-zero to one, one-seven-zero.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay. So if we turn to page one, governing body, our first expenditure, what you'll notice is there's a small increase in professional services audit. If you recall, you recently approved an audit. Here you are, Benny. It's, it should be like page five where you are. This is basically where the board is paid from, a small increase for professional services audit. And then there is a small contingency built in here, which I have a slew of small projects that are not prioritized by you all that I would like to accomplish in the next year.
We just say page number one. Which one you?
I got it.
Because I have page one, page one, page one.
Okay.
Well, it's just.
Yes, sir. Yes. So you're in the world. Now, I'd like to talk to you a little about this contingency projects that we hopefully can prioritize in the next year. And they include things like the asbestos abatement that we have a quote for, for the old health department, and then also demolition. I know the register has approached me about tiling some floors in her, in her department where there was carpet, and it was a little mossy, so we're going to try to clean that up. I'm review my list.
For contingency.
That's right. I also priced out a salary study. I think it's wise to maintain factual numbers on what our competitors are paying so that we can maintain our competitive nature for all departments. Another one is courtroom furniture. If you recall, two years ago, we did a new desk for the clerk of court. The furniture that is directly in front of the judge is very dilapidated and to be replaced.
Did they overorder the chairs for the office in there, Holly's office?
Did clerk court ever order new chairs for her office?
I'm not aware of it. Did it not?
I mean.
We. I talked to Holly, and she said that she was going to look for some, and they never sent us any.
Got you.
So I don't know if they got.
I know, I know.
So anyways, there are, there are some projects that could, could use our attention, and they're listed. There may be more. I'd love to hear them from you. Are there any questions about governing body?
So what's, I want to make sure we can just clarify right from start, what kind of product comes up.
Yeah.
Is commissioner receiving a raise or anything?
The commissioners will receive the same quota that staff receives. And if you recall from the message, that's three and a half percent.
I'm going to assume that travel is increasing sharply.
So what I found there in travel was, the trend was, with more participation from the board, that there's a higher cost. I'm not going to try and sugarcoat and say, oh, I'm going to keep that down. If there's a higher cost and people are participating, let's, let's appropriate more funds for that so that we have a more accurate depiction of what's actually going on. I don't want any department to go into the red. Does that make sense?
I just want to clarify what's why it brings that up.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions in governing body? All right, let's flip the page. Move on to general government.
When you do this. I don't see number size, page one, page two.
Okay.
You know, makes me so. I know you know where you are. You've got to remember.
Okay, so in general government, you're really going to see a decrease in expense. Okay? And the reason for the decrease is the more spreading out of the insurance, property liability, and workers' comp. But that's it. It is identical to prior year besides those two things. I'm sorry, ECC dues was in two places, and it is now in one. They have gone for a combined, a combined total rather than having it spread out between dues and then RTPO dues. They just have one fee, and you'll notice that in five, two, one, three hundred. Are there any questions in general government?
Yeah, advertise. What do we, what do we advertise?
Public notice advertisements, job notice advertisements.
Wait a minute. What are we there?
Copies.
Copies.
Okay, if everyone's okay with general government, let's move on to administration. Administration is generally the same. There is there's funding in here for more prepaid Munis training. We've got a very capable finance staff. We want to make sure that they're receiving the schooling, the training, et cetera, to understand the software and how they can use it in their daily work. We want to make sure they're as efficient as they can be. If you buy before you make the call, it's a little bit cheaper than making the call and paying the rate. That's up to a certain threshold. Another thing is, is there's an addition of Civic Plus software. You'll see that's at fifteen thousand dollars. That is software that's going to help make more consistent our agendas. That's great. Make, make more consistent our agendas and our minutes. And attempting to be responsive to what I view and hear from you all, Trey views and hears from you all, is that we could use a little more consistency in that, and we think that the software will aid us in that. Beyond that, it's, it's a very similar budget to prior year because it worked.
Kyle, I know why that we change software. How long would it last? I mean, I know it takes a long.
So if you were, if you recall, Mr. James T., in administration, we didn't change software, as we updated software. As we went from a a version that was no longer going to be supported from Tyler Technology or Munis to a version that was, and this is a web, web-based version, which is very current. It is not the most current. It would be my assumption that we could, we, we could use this for another, what, three or four years, and then we would have to do another upgrade, but we would maintain that Munis software. It's got a lot of our, our history and data and such. Would you agree with that, Sandy? Yeah. Thank you, sir. Any other questions in admin? Okay, let's move on. Our next department is tax. Really, the only bell and whistle that we have in tax is the need for a new server, and that's going to be in your, on your page two of tax. There's a server in there. It is for, it's a Munis server for, you know, the cashiering and the citizen self-service. It's it's just an improvement that it's recommended we make from our third-party company, Intercom Systems. Okay? Beyond that, the budget is very, very close to last year's. I think I see a total increase of nine thousand dollars. Other questions? Okay, if there are none, we can move on. And we go to court, and the court's budget is generally the same, and a lot of it is a reimbursement to to the county, a form or another for utilities. But if you recall, in the contingency budget that I mentioned, a priority could be to redo some furniture in that courtroom. We heard a good review about what was done two years ago, and I know it would be applauded and received well if we could do it to more of that furniture. We'll, we'll see. We'll see. Any questions in court, courts?
Kyle, we're pretty pleased with what you've been.
I believe the clerk of court and Judge Pink were very pleased with the new desk that was built. If you recall, we had Ferrier and Sons come in and build that, and they were selected because of the fine work they did at the operations center building the commissioners bench or desk, however you want to think about that workstation.
They're very happy. Very happy.
Yeah, I, I think that if it was a priority that you selected, they would be very pleased if we could do that for some more of the furniture.
Isn't he making one as mine?
I, I believe Jerry, Jerry is working on that. That's one of Joe's contractors. Yeah, you can just add that into the contingency. We can move on to elections. I know at the last meeting, an individual, Mr. David, came and spoke about wanting increases for the poll workers, and I do want to reassure you that an increase for the poll workers is included in this budget. An increase from ten fifty-four an hour to twelve fifty an hour. And I had that confirmed this morning from Josh Jones and Michelle Sutton.
How much is that question? But I was just sorry about that. He said it would make a crap out of our, our state was making twenty-four hours. So how much is that? How many you increase it for hour?
I'm sorry, Sandy.
Well, the problem is, you got to look at what Mecklenburg County pays, Raleigh pays, but we, Mecklenburg County, we, Raleigh. And he wanted twenty-five dollars an hour, twenty-four.
He said the statewide average.
I think he said the national average was.
Yeah, it was the national average.
I can't control what goes on in those other places. I'll say we are competitive with those around us and those like us.
He provided word at our next record meeting with like a sheet showing what North County, Get County represent. Support. Because what he, what he mentioned was very concerning. I'm going to have to work surrounding camera.
I think you did mention also the state average was twenty-three fifty-eight or something like that. It was posted to twenty-four. Instead of.
The state that were close to the national, like twenty-four something.
The longer, where the neighborhood of the counties are, we, we are like.
Simple, similar-sized population, et cetera, et cetera.
I think that what, the important thing, what is concerned about all with what the poll worker was going to, going through, you need to be attracted enough to get people to work out it in it.
Sure.
In it.
Most people retire.
Yeah. And, and that's the, that's the point. You know, you need, with what's going on now with everywhere. You need some good people out there helping out. And twelve hours, I was saying, you'll be out there going through that hassle for twelve hours.
Yeah.
So this, because it really not work, and, and, and you don't know what kind of challenge is going to be with, with this election. You know. You know?
Thank you. I will say that you'll see a lot of elections cost is down this year. If you recall, we've got one election in the fall. And then some of our municipalities have gone to the every four years election, so they've made themselves more efficient. So less monies are appropriated for more elections because they are, they're combined. So we, we saw some efficiencies there. Derek, I'll be happy to provide that. Thank you for the time. Are there other questions in elections? Okay, if there's not, we'll move on. If register deeds page. Um, honestly, the register was. It's very similar to last year. Um, we've had a, a change in the register and I believe the biggest increase in that department is going to be employee insurance because all of the employees are utilizing the insurance provided by the county. So beyond that, it's a very similar budget to prior year. If you do recall, she did ask for some tiling. Now, I mentioned that in the contingency budget that I hope that we can prioritize in the near future. If there are no questions in the register, we can move on to inspections. Inspections is, is very similar to the prior year. It was their year in the vehicle placement plan. And Mr. Scott Sutton asked for a, a, a regular cab four by four. I think he's a Ford man. So that would be an F-150 four by four. And you see that budgeted on page two of the inspections budget. Capital outlet. Beyond that, it's a very similar budget to the past. This are a, a very good department. You guys had a lot of foresight and wisdom in creating and combining those.
Also driving more.
Uh, I believe he's driving seventeen F-150.
Okay. Why would he need a F-two thirty?
He doesn't, he wants an F-one fifty, okay? Okay, i- if there are no questions in inspections, we'll move on. Animal control. If recall from the message, animal control had the part-time individual become full-time because of the hard work performed. Uh, achieving and receiving that grant, um, that work should be done before the end of this fiscal year. Beyond that, um, there is another truck to replace the F-two fifty currently in that department. It's twenty seventeen. Uh, I believe they told me the truck has a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it. It's been a good truck and, uh, it's just their turn to be replaced in the fleet.
Same style.
A two fifty crew.
They, um. Person.
Yeah.
With a full-time animal control person, but they have time to go out and, and check any kind of, if you see bad conditions.
That's.
And people kind of abandon them.
That is part of their daily routine. When they are out and about, they are observing um, for animals they can see, the condition that the animals are living in because nobody wants an animal of any kind. Uh, yet to be abused or to live in unfit living condition. Now, they can't see them all though, uh, James T., you know, so they, what they can see from the road or what they're warned about, they'll check up.
People will go.
That's right, that's right. It, it takes a community, it takes us all.
What have we got contracted with Northside Animal?
Um, Northside does, um.
Unification. Unification.
Yeah, put them down, okay.
As well.
They actually do it for cheaper than we. Say it again?
Will Dr. Smith still do anything?
No, sir. Um, we would take any guidance he would provide us at any time. We appreciate Dr. Smith, but, uh.
I ain't talking about Ibis Smith, man.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Charles Smith, it rang.
Not to my knowledge. Um, we use Dr. Shaver, uh, with Northside. If, um, any questions in animal control, it's a, it's a department that continues to grow. It's a, it's a very important department.
The grand movie God is gonna be with that.
That's gonna help. That's gonna help with our facility maintenance, some of the, um, uh, deficiencies or causes for improvement that they have recommended will be able to be completed with those parts. Okay, so. We move on to sheriff. Uh, I've got some good news in sheriff's department. Um, we had budgeted our number for Durangos, four Durangos. If you recall, that's the arrangement we have with sheriff's department. But the, uh, he, he wasn't able to find chargers. I think it's been, it's a discontinued car model. He was able to find four in Tennessee, um, on their state contract. Um, there'll be some savings. So once we get that in, we'll be able to see and realize what those savings are. Um, some of those savings are going to come in the form of being able to reuse some of the equipment we already have, rather than trying to outfit a, a Durango with something new or something. It's a.
What he found was Durangos?
He found chargers.
Chargers, okay.
He, he was excited about that.
Oh, yeah, me.
I'm excited about that.
You hit a deer just like this.
Well, um, God willing, they'll take advantage of the program that's put on by the association. Well, they'll give you three grow yards a year at an expense of fifteen hundred dollars. And I've always said if they'll do that, the county will find a way to match that so we can do six. So I'm hoping they'll take advantage of that. Please encourage you to.
Oh, yeah.
There are no questions in the sheriff's budget. We can move on to uh, jail. Jail's budget is strikingly similar to the prior years. Debt payments are updated, debt and interest payments are updated. Um, there are some increased costs in some of the various areas of the jail. Um, just costs are going up. It's, they, costs don't discriminate. They are, they affect everybody.
And we're still.
That's right, that's right. Okay, well, if there are no questions in the jail budget, we can move on to EM. This is a very lead budget. I'm very happy how it came in. Very small increase, um, and that is for the the increase in salaries and the first responder program. No, the first responder program is in the other, is just salaries. Otherwise, it's a, for the most part, a mirror, uh, mirror image of prior year.
The flowers that wrong color commerce, that's true, again, rotated on my, that merge management directly one week, the forest better necessarily that could be rotated.
I believe there's a rotation.
We, uh, vehicle generated few. I know it's going there for everything, okay?
Well, he, I didn't change it from what he had put in.
Okay.
If, uh, fuel continues to rise and they need more money, we'll try to work from within the budget.
You brought a little bit.
We'll, we'll use it from other, we'll transfer from other line items in that budget. Um, if more money is overall needed, we'll make sure that we bring it to you with a very good. But I mean, that's, and that's, uh, no thrills. There are any questions, we can move on to the EMS budget. Uh, initially in this budget, the director asked that, uh, we reclassify a few positions to include, not only EMS supervisors, but EMS assistant supervisors to really delineate a chain of command. And I think that's a, it sounds great, but it's just not in the cards this year. Um, that was removed, so we're gonna need him to, I guess, maintain that close management. Beyond that, you will see a QRV is included.
Where would that be kept at?
The QRV?
Yeah.
Uh, one of the two stations, um, I would say Snow Hill Station. There will only be one active QRV, but it will have to be located at the Snow Hill Station or the Maury Station. And that's up to the director and staff. Uh, that's beyond my scope of authority or, or no. Um, the reason for the QRV is we have a twenty, twenty QRV, I believe, twenty-one even. And that vehicle has already got, uh, fifty-five thousand miles on it. They are, it's being ran, it's being used. I believe it's got fifty-five thousand miles on it. And, uh, having another one would give it the opportunity to have a break, be maintained, et cetera, while still providing the service to the citizens. That is much like our animal control budget, this budget continues to grow. It's a, it's a big responsibility and things are becoming more and more expensive.
The QRV going to be rotated back to Ambers, right?
Yes. Try to build some longevity into the vehicle.
I want to.
That's right. Is there any questions in EMS? Made some great strides in that department. Hope we continue to. We move on to communications. Um, again, this is a no frills budget. Do you recall, a lot of the equipment is still very new from the opening of the operations center. A lot of the equipment in communications is eligible, if not completely, partially by the ETSF funds from NC nine one one. Um, Brock is running a capital improvement plan in that department. He's keeping up with it, so pretty happy with that. This is just, it really is the operations and it's, it's what it costs her to staff it.
How many, but as I said, advertised under instructions, so try, test, and go, water, for advertising.
So when his department was set up, some of the line account descriptions do not match with other departments or don't fit for what he's trying to do. So he tried to be very descriptive when he put in the description of the expense because he knew that did not align with the account description. Thank you for reading it that closely.
Am I the only one that has EMS in your twice?
You may have.
I do have it twice. Back to back, you know?
Well, you're gonna double dose that, bud.
EMS is twice.
Did you have communications though?
I didn't have communications. They're just, with the model, EMS, but EMS page one. That's what I'm saying. I said, I was gonna check on the numbers and that's all.
Okay. Not a lot of rules.
There's three parts.
We move on to public buildings. Remember, public buildings are shared facilities. Um, health services, DSS and Health is a public building. Um, this, the county complex is a shared building. The operations center is a shared building. Um, the justice center is a shared building. Not a lot of change, a lot of consistent things in there. I will say we have added two AEDs, okay? Um, I think we're going to start a program where we continue to add these AEDs annually to different buildings and different, different structures, uh, different facilities to improve safety, uh, for anyone in there for the occurrence that anything happens to someone. Other questions?
Yeah, he's got, uh, two different.
Buildings, preferences.
Okay. Contracted.
You, you think? And I, I can push for that single incentive. But, uh, some of the different places, uh, had success and others choose enough, yes.
The acronym, what is it? Automated Electronic Devices or what?
Diffusor.
Diffusor, okay.
No, clear.
So we're planning to install these, um, in order to this year and order to until we get all the building, but we're, we're trying to run all the employees through CPR plan and, uh, train throughout next year.
Okay, really right back to G P.
I was gonna say that senior center already has it. It's just, uh, trying to get all the public doing. Feature that will.
I forgot what the acronym said.
I'm glad you asked.
In church, we have that, the soft logic. Yeah, we have AEDs, but I just couldn't remember what it stood.
I'm, I'm glad you asked. Um, are there any questions in public buildings? No, okay. We move on to economic development. I'll say there's an increase in the budget, but a lot of these are for, um, economic incentive grants that we know we may be on the hook for if the company uh, reaches the milestones outlined from the economic development department and their specific agreements. I also want you to know that in this department, um, the employees' salary is split because we are contracting with a little county right now, Sharon, Mr. Cash. And I've, I see good reviews or I see good, it's coming from his work and I hear good reviews from Lenore County. So right now that's working, may not always work, but it works today and continue to, to do that until it doesn't work. Okay?
That's how we split for a hotel. How, how can you spend in both towns?
I'm fifty-fifty, honestly. Depends on what day is.
Did you get compensated from global transport section?
Uh, that's negotiated with the county, so no, my firm. Yep.
Any questions in economic development? I, ironically, it's kind of a good thing for that budget to go up because we are making agreements. We are making contractual agreements with these companies that are coming in because they're adding to our tax things. They're bringing new jobs, paying higher wages with insurance. So it's a, it's a good thing.
Because you're always that you have.
We'll work on that.
Have we started?
Uh, is he to D E R? Uh, I believe that went in twenty.
Oh, yeah, or November.
November of twenty twenty.
And and by doing that, you know, have a shop. Benefit, we gotta have got, um, hey. I think that was the one, uh, a good move that we made, like, to do that.
Yeah.
I think.
Oh, you know, Trey works directly with it every day. I'll, I'll defer to Trey. Go ahead.
But, uh, we, we, anyway, Trey know what I'm, sure must, what I'm talking about. At one time, we had some kickback and you know, we really didn't want that to happen. But that's the best thing that has happened.
One, one county can't stand it alone. Yeah, you got regionalize.
I, I feel it as, uh, if you're fishing at the Big Rock and you have all the counties in fishing in the same tournament. You know, we would go out there, if we were to economic develop by ourselves, we'd go out there on a little boat and try to fish the Big Rock. And then Wayne, Lenore got their own boats. When we put them together, we actually put a boat that can compete. So it's, you know, marketing, marketing is the biggest aspect of this is what we get from the transport region itself. They pay for software to get through our realtors, to our site selectors. And make sure that we're producing enough marketing and getting to them, um, enough. Cause I, you know, as a one-man shop, you can't market, you can't show, you can't do it all together. So since November twenty, I believe, we in Green County. So since November twenty, I believe we in Green County have had over a hundred fifty. I know we've had almost two hundred jobs and over ten million dollars in investment in the county. And we're hoping to have that grow significantly.
Um, is that a good time to take a short break, guys? Um, use the restroom and whatnot?
Sounds good, Mike.
Fire district. Wondering how many square miles was in the district, so I pulled up the.
So it is the same budget as prior year. In the long session this next year, they'll tell us of a new budget. This, this reflects last year's. Pretty easy one. We move on to extension. Beyond salary increases, it is predominantly similar to prior year. Um, Jessica does a wonderful job in that department. I hear many compliments, so if there are any questions, we'll ask to explain some.
The uh. The Lady Ballfield building.
Yeah.
Did she put in there to give a canopy to put up those doors?
And I'm, I think you've all seen that. Do you want me to ask her?
Yeah, I asked her.
And you want a. Okay.
What do you call it? A canopy?
Honey.
Oh, yeah, something like that. Over two doors to the Lady Ballfield.
Lady Woods.
I'll ask about that and remember if she didn't, we do have a very small contingency amount if that's your priority.
You'll figure out. I think it would look a lot better, you know, people going in and out in the rain or whatever, so.
Sure, sure.
There's uh. The farmer's market that's reed up. Mm-hmm. Question mark. It's on the next page and we do have um three thousand dollars for maintenance and building repairs.
Well, I'll be sure to ask because some of these get definitions by them and, you know, intent of expense and some of them don't. So I'll, I'll follow up on it if you say. But as you can see, uh, overall cost for farmer's market has gone down. But they are maintaining the buildings. I will check on the honors. We got soil, water, soil, water is for the most part identical, other than salaries and benefits associated with a three and a half percent COLA.
Yeah, I think we're getting a new technician restaurant comes.
Wonderful. If no questions in soil, water, veterans, veterans is the same other than salaries and benefits. I know the guy who makes that budget. When we go to schools, if you recall, this is year two of a three-year agreement that we had um for costs that helps us manage that cost. Um, and I'll reiterate that Dr. Peach did ask for a little more, is not in here. But if that's your priority, my goodness, we'll put it in there.
How much more did he ask for?
A hundred and forty thousand.
I think we need to pull that article up, see what it's everything around, the actual pay dimension. Has Ziv got the middle ground to go, depending where you question.
Okay, let me make note of that. Um, basically you're saying to compromise. For school.
It does possible middle ground, at least, because I, I like that honor, there's a question much possible, but I don't.
Absolutely.
From school and it, nobody can.
Sure, sure.
I wouldn't try to, you know.
Before we do that, I would like for you to be explaining to me is after what is for.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, well, we have a few days, be happy to ask him and uh give us more explanation, et cetera. Uh, to make you all feel comfortable and make it a, a good decision.
We, we only got this thing balanced out, who are we going to get out of there for that?
Um, beyond the.
Got tape, tape for bigger rock.
Well, beyond the contingency funds. Uh, there's always fund balance appropriated. I do not like to appropriate fund balance in the balancing of a budget. I think it's uh best practice not to. In time, in the year, sometimes you have to appropriate expenditures against it, but I, I really try not to when balancing a budget. It's just, that's uh, that's discipline I hold myself to. Uh, as mentioned before, there was an increase for the library. Ms. Melanie mentioned that she did that to maintain the same level of service that we are used to. Moving on. We do have trillion funds in here. These are funds for use, this used to be East Point expense. But now it's true. This is for user service, et cetera. But it didn't change. I asked Mr. David Peterson if it needed to change and he said contributions per profile.
What if I can assist my former friend?
Okay, um. It's the, it's the liquor board.
It's on a trillion issue.
Yes, so part of the, part of the money that the C board gives us is designated for mental health. I'm glad we learned something today.
I knew that C store had due alcohol programs that was once a while, but I didn't know the trade in the park.
Well, so when we receive that portion from the ABC board, we give it to, that used to be East Point, it's now Trillium. Uh, so that they can provide some mental health services for, for those in need. Okay, we move on to recreation. I will say um. We're looking for consistency, Jerry. Um, I'll say recreation turned in a phenomenal budget this year. Um, I'm really happy with the improvement in the budgeting and the actuals of that department. I'll be happy to answer any questions I see. Uh, I hear, I will say that a second mower was added to recreation. There were three mowers that were um leased by the county. Two had been in Public Works, one had been in Recreation. Because of the transition I mentioned from the message being made in Public Works, we are going to put two leased mowers in Recreation and have one leased mower in Public Works. So you will see an increase from forty-nine hundred to ninety-eight hundred for the Kubota lease.
Who, where's this at?
Down here.
I know, which cut?
Um, Musgrave?
Musgrave.
Okay.
Are we still contracting with the contractor for Recreation Department? To go oversee their expenses and stuff.
Um, uh, that is not in this budget. That was a one-year thing. And that's why I kind of wanted to mention the uh appreciation I have for the budget that was turned in and how the budget in the current year is being managed. I think the contractor has done a very nice job. But no, sir. Okay, there are no questions in recreation. We can move on. Now Benny, I think you're going to see that senior revenue, some of that is uh located in your, your eleven one thirties and there's some of the one seventies, excuse me. But that's uh, these are the senior revenues. Uh, you know, I've seen it on the screen, you're seeing it in your book. Um, a lot of these numbers are compiled by Miss Sharon Harrison based on information, communications, et cetera. She receives from council on aging and other sources for information.
I want to put a search and visit, I know already action, but I won't make, I won't be able to. On video, your five, your budget.
Yes.
This is the budget for the upcoming year.
Yes, sir.
So I know it's on there, we can all stay fair this year.
It's on there.
Okay. I'll be wondering, stay fair this year.
Yes. Eleven five eighty-six.
Yeah.
Uh, I asked that question because we didn't make it last year because activity was scheduled for somewhere else last year and a lot, and myself. We're going to the state fair together.
State fair has changed because the last year we went, they were not prepared for the buses like they normally. They were not prepared for the buses like they normally are.
Yeah.
So we had some issues.
Yeah, I remember that.
I'm talking Mr. Trump.
Tuesday after it opens on Thursday, that's citizens day.
Yes.
Or used to be.
Yeah.
You know, that's probably a good time to mention it. Um, in many departments, um, I take from the department heads and I can kind of. You can tell because it's a singular department. Spreading out of their different costs, locations of costs over different departments. But there are two departments that I, I really don't mess with a whole, whole lot. One is the senior and the other is health. They're very complex budgets that when you. If you, I don't know, if you mess with an expenditure or a revenue in something, it can adversely affect other departments or the revenues. So when you do have a cut in either, then you've really got to be sure it's county only funded. It's a, it's, it's, it's a challenge. And both were very, um, they worked, they both worked with me very well. Um, when I had to ask for some monies to, to find the balance that we needed.
Well, all of our department is doing a good job.
I totally agree, couldn't do this without.
Appreciate all of our department heads and our employees and. Not to, uh, since they're one department over another, but I did pick it up on the, uh. State fair thing. Our seniors really enjoy that and many other programs that Sharon takes care of for them.
Yeah.
So.
I, I, I think that's an annual thing.
It wasn't last year.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only reason I'll say it.
Okay, so you see the revenue, I'll see her expenditure requests.
Yep.
Any changes were discussed so that. Everyone is comfortable or on board with, with being presented. Let's see, we passed senior center in your books and we go to E nine, one, one, which is Fund sixteen. Now, this is a number that's given to us by NC nine, one, one, which we then offset our expenditures to match. We will see that this year. We don't have any going to reserve views as we have. As I mentioned before, we have a capital improvement plan that we maintain in this department so that we, all of our communication and dispatch equipment is current. No more falling behind. Another thing consistent spending in this department does is if you do not, you build too much of a fund balance. They will reduce your future distribution from the state by certain percentages. So we make sure that that capital improvement plan is honored. Giving staff the best equipment and also making sure we maximize our, what we can receive from, from that funding source. Any questions on you know? I know Brock and Deborah continue to improve that. They've done a nice job. We go to school finance. Just debt payment. So then there, if there's any questions, be happy to answer it. You've got some time left out. Uh, we move into, oh, we move into our water reserve fund. Probably not something we go through a whole lot. This is the, where we, uh, this is the fund where we predominantly hold our water debt payments. So things are transferred from our water operations fund to our water debt service fund. And these, uh, if you look on the bottom of the AWS page, your one A interest payments, uh, your one C payments, your one H, your DWSRS. Those are the different loans that we have in that department that make it what it is. Okay. If there are no questions, we can move on to water and sewer, Fund sixty one. Um, if you recall from the budget message. There are. There's a new vehicle and also a new service truck in the water budget. I'll also say there's a forklift and that forklift is to move things that need. A forklift to be moved around that new facility that they have. He's found a nice used one he's got his eye on and he would like to put that in that facility. Beyond that. Water increases from GUC, sewer increases from Thornville are reflected in, in the expenditure budget. Rate increases passed on to the consumer and you will see, you'll see those rate increases from the consumer in our revenues. So everything must maintain balance. This, uh, this fund definitely supports itself and it does because you guys allow the rates to be increased when they are given to us. We shouldn't absorb that.
The rate increases are inevitable.
Yes.
Doing them small, year after year after year sort of thing is a lot more powerful to. Our citizens, a big increase at one time would be difficult.
Yeah, it's like I said before, I believe that. Inflation doesn't discriminate and water and water production, water transport, it's, it's all, it's all affected and. Anyways, any questions in water and sewer? Um, if not, we move on to landfill. Um, if you recall, real recently, we just purchased a compactor in current year's budget. So you'll see that that has been removed from future year buzz, uh, budget. What has stayed is he's got a bulldozer for the landfill that needs a new undercarriage. And that is a forty thousand dollar expense. That is still in here, just trying to maintain the equipment we have so if you buy the service that we expect. And if you recall in the budget message, I mentioned to you a ten dollar increase total, five dollars for the user fee, five dollars for the convenience fee. To try and put us more in line with actual cost of, uh, conducting the, the enterprise of a landfill. Just trying to make it so we can balance this thing out. I think they do a really nice job. Yes, Jerry.
Oh, some landfills require to have your materials covered when you come in.
Yep.
We probably just need to air it out. We appreciate.
Yeah, so in speaking.
Some people do, I mean, I do see some of them.
And speaking with the public works director about that, there are state laws already in place. And we are going to continue to communicate what those state laws are and post these state laws at minimum. Uh, before anything beyond what is already in place is, uh, thought about or potentially enforced. And that is, the issue is the enforcement. How do you do that? I know in a neighboring county, they have a, a person who is a. Um, it's like a, it's like a, a police officer almost. Who, whose sole job is to track, uh, people who litter unknowingly by not having stuff covered. I mean, that's their job. It's a. We're not there. So trying to encourage maybe mandate.
I feel we need to start off there.
Yeah. We're going to start at the beginning, baby step this and see if there's a way we can improve. Yes.
You refer to pit count, but you know, I pick up a lot of trucks beside the road. Uh, and one road. For the truck side is about four miles. I pick it up one hour and the next hour, another truck. So I go through a lot of that trust and you can never figure out who belongs to.
Yeah, I hear stories like that from different people and we appreciate you picking that up, uh, keeping the county beautiful. We, all we can do is continue to try to get better. Maybe on how enforce.
District attorney is going to prosecute.
Well, I.
I've heard that, I mean, not on the true. I'm trying to figure out, you know, you talk about the police officers. I'm trying to figure out who some of this stuff belongs to. You can't figure it out. And I think a lot of it is unsupervised load. It's not people throwing out, it's unsupervised load.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what you see. That's what you bag right side.
That's what Jerry's talking about. It, the sad thing is, is you know, if you threw six bags of garbage in the back of your truck, you get to landfill and there's five.
Sure. When you go back home.
The other ones sprouted wings and blew away.
If you go back home, you go a route right back by.
That's right.
Yeah, and, uh, but, but anyways, um, that is an initiative that we're going to try and.
Okay.
And improve, Jerry. Try and keep our county clean.
I think we need, for this is not for the future. I'm seeing a lot of people have a lot of scrap metal. We need to figure out how to get, to get, they can get rid of this scrap metal. Need to promote that somehow. Go to the ground.
So.
I'm seeing a lot of scrap. Well, they'll take it over there. I think.
Well, I, I think we'll take scrap metal in our landfill. You got to pay to get rid of it and you throw it in the metal pile.
Yes. So we need to remove that.
I understand.
Oh, not that. Convenient sites.
Yeah.
You know, another three of them I use and each, all three of them has this rock pile. We crush rocks and when it rains, you know, you ride through a lot of water. Is there any way we can have the rocks spread out, piss these holes in this convenient site?
Sure.
We need to get the rocks spread out to the strong ways that. I know this is not related to project, but I just thought about it.
Uh, but you know, ongoing process of maintenance.
That's what they're doing. I was going to say, I was, uh, down at the one there by Wade, Wade's.
Yeah.
And.
It's the new road.
Yeah, that, that was pretty well maintained. I was, Harold and I were there. I've made note of that, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments in landfill? We can move on and we hit transportation. Transportation is doing very well. Got a great, great new director, Ms. Kim. Done a whole, whole lot different than prior year. You'll see some shuffling with the salaries from full time, part time, part time to full time, et cetera. Making sure that the department is staffed and providing service. You recall in the message I mentioned, she's up for three vans this year. Um, Lord knows when we'll get them. But. It's just a. Yeah. Keep your fingers crossed and come sooner than later.
Where do you have to order those?
We own some kind of, uh, Charlotte.
In Charlotte.
We did find out that, um. They did finally get some kind of resili- we just got this year twenty three land. We've got one for twenty four that we have no idea.
I heard January twenty five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And then we've got obviously three for this year twenty five and one two for this year twenty six.
Because. So they've got their own vehicle replacement land, um, just like we.
How many miles have you tried to put on before you, oh, you just replaced maybe three years, five years?
We know what's on our, I mean, that's going to.
Okay, I got you.
They already, um, this is for your twenty six grand, so you kind of have to. Okay.
Okay, good deal.
If you remember, this is a federally, well, mostly a federally funded department and their fiscal does not align with ours. So some of their dates are far in advance of what makes sense to us probably, but, uh. But anyways, it's a. Me, the department, um, what a circus. Um, we continue to move on. And we jump back into public health. And public health. It's a very similar budget to last year. The increases for salaries and benefits are included. I will make mention that in this budget, um, it was. Public health was due a new vehicle. I did not put a new vehicle in public health's budget. Um, I want you to know that, uh, it was a, it's a twenty seventeen Dodge Journey. It would be, it would end up being somewhat of like a Ford Escape because Journeys aren't anymore. But the mileage. And the other vehicles in the department, I don't believe warranted a new vehicle now. We have other options for travel, which is reimbursement. Um, and they also have other vehicles, like I said. If a new plan does not work, we can always go back and add a vehicle back in. I just did not see it as making the most dollars and cents in this budget.
We asked to keep that.
It would be my recommendation to hold on to it. I think they just put new tires on it and I want to make sure that that, uh, you can get a couple. Couple of miles on those tires, get some value out of them before a surplus takes place.
You still have a mosquito program? Is that going left there, is that stayed the same?
That was reduced to thousand dollars.
Reduced.
To current year's expenditure. Okay. There are no questions and help?
I mean, you're more, must work for the airport, so every year.
Yep, they're programmatic functions. So the dollars that she was spending are for specific programs that are provided by that, by that department that. Like I said, it's, it's very similar to the senior center. They're very programmatically functioned. Um, our last budget to go through is DSS. DSS is.
Okay.
Okay. The revenues and expenditures. Amanda and I worked together to. Compromise to find, uh. Most appropriate spending program for that department as a whole that we could to meet the county's budget and to maintain and meet their. Their needs to provide service. Yeah.
Big budget. It is.
So there is a, a new Ford Escape in that department. They currently have. I believe three vehicles in that department. Like here.
Unless you're saying something about new desks and chairs and stuff out here, then with the school. It should be ready in twenty six.
Uh, I think they're going to start school there in the fall of twenty six and they'll, they'll be completed. Um, in the spring of twenty six, December, January, February. That's my thoughts.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is probably a lot of good desks and chairs and stuff like this for offices. You know, it could be used.
If they surplus an offer, we'll be sure to take a look at it.
Keep an eye on that.
Yeah, absolutely, sir. And we're sharing amongst departments.
Okay.
So.
Cause I'm in the school gets most of their stuff from guy in home view. Their desk and all that for.
I'll just keep in mind that is, um, the shopper's desk stuff, I think it might have been a master of gear before. I was only sort of service board and tried to find some new desks to have it part of another apartment. And as soon as they brought it over, the desk burned apart. And so I want to be careful about, you know, using shopper's junk.
Whether there's a difference between surplus and junk. Junk goes in the trash. Surplus can gain some sort of.
Repurpose.
Yeah, but if we're going to repurpose, we can repurpose ourselves. Sell is going to garner some sort of rep- there's a difference, surplus and junk.
They have, they should have good desk and charge.
I got one in Joey and we use it in Chinese fashion. Drop what you need for it out, but they actually searched on where to find me that. It's the one that's gone small.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
Wonderful. I, I, I like hearing the cooperation between the departments. Let's see, are there questions in DSS? A lot of, it's a big department, um, got some young staff, a lot of room for growth and a lot of growing. We're just going to continue to get better together. Any other questions? DSS, any questions budget overall? Yeah. And if there are no questions. If there are no questions, yeah, it's my opinion that we've answered the request of the department heads to fund their services appropriately. Didn't use any fund balance to offset any of the expenditures requested. I believe this is a good budget and I'd be happy to talk anymore about it with anybody who's up to. Certainly on that, that's what I have for you.
On the last page of social, it's, uh, this does not include having a pay for others and others' children that were responsible to help with cars and hygienic and other stuff. So that probably sound like it's kind of a funny.
So initially a large number was put in there. In discussion with the social services director, it was relayed to me that the number put in there was a worst case scenario. I relayed to the social services director, we can't budget based on the worst case scenario. We have to budget based on probable business. What is, what is it gonna cost? And that's where that trend comes in. What have we spent? And that's what, that's what we should really be budgeting for is typical business, not atypical business, not extremes. Um, something could happen in any department where we are gonna have to go to the commissioners, you are, and ask, hey, guys, this atypical business situation outside of what we could have forecasted. We need funding so that we can provide the service. And at that time, with that explanation, I would hope that you agree to that.
Well, should, should guys have to emerge at times, she can draw, it will, she needs to draw down what we need.
Well, that's right. If you recall, I mentioned that I had a meeting with the social services director, Amanda, and we came to this together. And she thought that this was a palatable amount of money for that particular line item for typical business. And if the business becomes atypical, we'll address it when it does. All we can do is respond to that.
Thanks. I just wanna, I was just telling my concern of finding a great description.
Sure, sure. Well, I think it's a big, uh, it's a big issue right now in social services. It's something that they are seeing more of. It, uh, it's actually a hot topic in the state. So so we're gonna budget based on the typical business and we'll respond to the atypical business when it presents itself, if it presents itself. When.
Okay.
But that's, if there are no more questions, that's all I have for you. Digest it.
We will. I'll just make the comment.
Yes.
No. It's a, it's, it is a very positive note to note our department is willingness to work with the county manager and the relationship that you have with our department is. And agreeing together on what is an appropriate budget message for us. Um, this is your ninth year of a budget for Green County. Is that right?
Yeah.
I think it's about your ninth year. So you have, we, you have a, you have experience at the budget for Green County specifically. And this is about the ninth time we've gone through the budget with you. And we value the experience that you have in preparing the budget. So we have it. We value our department is their experience, their willingness to work with the county. We value what you've done as far as budget preparation and working with department is as well. It's a pleasurable experience to go through the budget together and, um, I'm not seeing a real issues to discuss of a significant magnitude.
Thank you.
Do you have a department here, has any comments? Trade getting comments along?
No. None of this is possible without the cooperation of all parties.
Thank you to our department, his, our employees, and that includes the county manager.
Hey.
And staff here. Administering staff.
Great call. Here's a regular lease officer.
Yes.
Trying to make this work.
And we're gonna keep getting better.
I don't claim that you told you got over that length. Can it be more? Get compact.
Probably put it together Tuesday.
Slip over there.
So we're sorry.
All right, guys. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you all.
Thank you.